Oh, yes. Uh, can be, uh, say on the, but Jack, you're like on full stage.
So I'll call the meeting to order. And the first order of business is the solar project. Is there a representative here?
Yes, it's the solar project. Uh, right now we have two members here and yourself on the line. Uh, it's like John's on the line, John Mitchell, so we have four.
Right. So what we have to do tonight with the solar project is this is like we're starting anew with a new application. So we have to determine completeness, whether or not, and then to set a public hearing, notify butters, and whether to do a site visit. So.
All right.
All right, I know you're excited. It makes a safe visit with CID.
So maybe you could up, update us. Maybe the applicant could update us. When any changes or any developments, because I think we got the project.
We're, uh, we are online, we're live, and, uh, Jack is, uh, leading the meeting. Go for it.
We all, everyone ready?
Yep.
All right. I'm Kara from Stan Tech.
Jeff Martin from Norah Solar.
Um, so, I mean, I think everyone here is quite familiar with this project at this point. I, we were excited to give, um, a detailed presentation tonight. Um, when we were here, our first, very first, uh, time meeting before the Chinese margins in September. At that meeting, uh, the board had requested that the, uh, electrical line running from the array to Main Street be put underground. We implemented that change, presented that to you when we came back in November. Um, so that you've all seen that already. There have been no other changes to the project. Throughout the course of these many months. So really thinking that we would just turn it over to the board for questions. And then we, you know, we, I think, went through, it's hard to remember exactly. Um, but I think we went through kind of the basics of our site plan review application in September. Obviously, we presented to you on the zoning application, um, in November and December, I believe it was. So, uh, again, there have been no changes to the site plan since that presentation. So, um, unless anyone wants more of a presentation, I would turn it over to the board for questions for comment.
Okay. Do any board members have a question?
So, Jack, um, I, I, I'm trying to recall in the fall. Um, we did accept it for completeness at that time. Am I correct in that?
Well, I don't think we determined completeness.
We never made that determination?
He had to wait for the CID to be complete to do that.
I didn't know what.
You got to the very end of it, right before the vote, as we were told.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we couldn't remember either. I actually went back to the meeting minutes today, because I couldn't remember if we did the completeness decision later, but no.
Yeah, I had a question about the decommissioning plan. How do you come up with the numbers for decommissioning? The dollar cost.
That, yeah, that, those, those numbers are, uh, developed by our engineers in, uh, sorry. In line with the state, the state's decommissioning requirements. So the state of Maine, uh, passed a, a solar decommissioning law. Um, and so we, we developed that plan based on those requirements.
And the state, the state reviews that?
Correct. So we submit the application to the state, the Department of Backload Protection. Uh, and they'll review that and improve that, that plan.
And when will that be done?
Um, so we put out the public notice, uh, so we can submit that.
Yeah, our plan is to file the application, the decommissioning application with DEP later this week. Um, and then anybody's guess as to when it will receive an approval from them on that application. But generally, a couple months.
So planning board members might recall that with the other solar project, we had the applicant pay for an outside expert to review their decommissioning numbers. And the amount changed significantly, but that was before the state law was enacted. Uh, required the applicants to have a state-approved decommissioning plan. So we can either go with the, what the applicant has proposed, or we can, you know, do the same thing again and hire an outside person to review it. If we wanted. I don't know if that's necessary, but I don't know if planning board members want that.
Did you, did you guys do it?
It's Krebs and Lansing, the civil engineers that did the design for the project. They're the, they're the ones that do those.
Henry, do you have questions?
I'm just trying to remember. In the last application, I think the civil engineer did the. Not that this seems competitive, I'm not trying to be, you know, comparing it to the last project, but I'm just trying to remember the lessons learned. I think the, um, I think then we had a third party, and I think it was TRC at the time, did a, did a third-party calculation. So we had, we had another consulting company do, uh, just a check on it. But I haven't, I can't, I haven't reviewed the commission plan details, so, but I'm sure the city will.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing I would say about it, um, so Norwich has done, I don't know, whatever, say ten or so projects in Maine. Krebs and Lansing has done these decommissioning plans, I think, for all of your projects, and they've, that have all gone through DEP. So they use the same, they've been using the same methodology for all of them, if that provides any, I don't know, comfort, so to speak. That DEP has reviewed many of these plans that Krebs has done for Norwich's other projects and has never flagged anything as being wrong. Or, you know, needing to be changed, like in terms of cost or anything. For what that's worth.
What do planning board members feel about a site visit? Is that necessary?
I mean, I always think it's a good idea, but whether or not it needs to be organized or not, I'm not sure. Maybe a lot of others be.
I think it might be worthwhile for an organized one, maybe, you know, before the meeting, the hearing meeting. Um, I know it's kind of left up to people going, whatever, to get that piece for completeness. But I think with the position of it, I think it'd be worthwhile, members to get back there and see actually where actually these plants are going to be standing. Judge for themselves what people can see from the road and judge from themselves the setbacks, because you really can't see it from the road. So I think it'd be a good idea just to get a, you know, everybody on board as to, you know, where we're going with this and what has to be added. And I think it'll probably be dry enough over the next week or so, hopefully.
Is it staked out where the arrays will be going, so we would?
It's not stated, no.
Is it stake, is it staked out where the arrays will be going, so we would?
It's not stated, no.
If, if, if the planning board did want to do a site visit, what we typically do, unless there's a different request by the board. Um, is we bring, uh, like an iPad that has the array, you know, on, on it. And then, you know, with the location, I can, or whoever can say, like, exactly where we're standing is where the arrays would start. You know, here's where the fence would be, here's where the driveway would be, that kind of thing. Um, if the board would prefer states, I mean, that, that's fine, too. We do find the iPad, it works quite well.
Would a.
I think it sounds like what we're doing, Jack.
Yeah, I agree. So we could do it at 5:30 before, and that would, that would give us enough time, I think, right? You have to just, five o'clock?
I think so, yeah. You gotta get them down there, get them out, and everybody back here, and it's gonna be a busy meeting next one, too.
Are you, you would date, I mean, two weeks from now, or?
Two weeks from now, right?
Unfortunately, I just told you, you know, I won't be there, it won't be here. It's not, I'm not saying.
Really? Well, maybe we should discuss later about when that would be, because we need it.
So do planning board members have any questions of the applicant to determine completeness?
Did we get a copy of the decommissioning plan? I just looked, I don't.
It's in the, it's in their application.
So the.
Is that the same one that you're submitting, or did you revise it?
There, there is a revision based on the, uh, moving the power underground. Um, so we revised the commission plan to account for that. It did increase the cost of, of the decommissioning. Take the power off.
Yeah, and that plan isn't 100% finalized, which is why we don't have a copy for you. But when we file it with DEP, uh, we can certainly send a hard copy down to the town.
So the, right now, the plan we have is attachment O to the application. Is that correct?
Right, and that's the draft based on the, our original site plan. Yep.
I have some general questions, uh, Jack, but they're not, which I think would be good to mention tonight, but they're not related to the, you know, the. Content of the application.
You want to ask them now? Say it now?
Sure, I just wanted to get your thoughts. Um, I've been thinking about this project, because I knew it was going to come back up, and, um. It's great we're at this point. Uh, one of the things that happened, um, on the last, uh, project we, we did. Uh, which is why I wanted to mention it early now, is during the construction phase, there was quite a lot of. Activity, like, or, you know, non-compliance of small things, let's say.
It was the end, the end of the construction.
Yeah, and towards it. And so I just wanted to kind of get your, get you to think about that. Uh, I know it would be built to view doing it, I get it, but I just say, I think that, for example, one of the things that happened was that. It was permitted at 10 feet like this is, or would be, and, and it, it farceted that in some cases. And so the result, the, the, you know, and that's a difficult thing to, to do after the fact. So, but I think we want to make sure that it is indeed within the specifications that are approved. And so I just wanted to make sure, you know, that you had some time to think about, like, how do you, other than just tell the contractor, make sure it's 10 feet. Uh, as an example, um, or make sure it goes here. I think we're looking, we're looking for specificity with not a lot of flexibility to certain aspects of the application, as I'm sure you expect.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, um, but that, that isn't our experience with this, just depending on the contractors you use. So I think you need to, I just wanted to mention that's something.
I think it might be a good time to have set scheduled times in landmarks where you ask me to come by, you know, and, you know, you could talk about that. Um, for the approval, but have, you know, the, uh, you're cutting the area, there's one. You're setting the poles, there's another. You're laying on the arrays, and at these different points, we could catch it before everything stands still.
It's also better for you guys, too. I think that's a good suggestion, because I think you don't want to have to wait at the end for. Your notice, your notice to connect and everything, right? You just, that's such a pain going around. So if you're keeping in touch, at least with us, Chip, then I think that would be a smoother process for your. And it would give the town our confidence in the projects, um, case and construction. That makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, we want the town to have a positive experience, you know, so it's like, we don't want to have issues like the previous project might have had. We want to do it the way it's supposed to be done, so.
So as part of the approval, we could condition it on certain inspections at certain times. Not tonight, but when we do the final approval.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Maybe you could consider that in your, in the, perhaps, if you have some sort of schedule, suggest and talk to your contractors and see what they, see what they suggest.
Any other issues, Henry?
No, not from me, no, these from Paul.
Any other questions by anyone? We're just here for, we need a motion to, uh, find the application complete, notify about our schedule, public hearing, and set a site visit.
You ready for the motion?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion that we find the application complete, we notify butters, we schedule a public hearing, and schedule a site visit.
Is there a second?
I'll serve it.
All those in favor? Is John still on? John?
Hi. Yes.
I'm a yes also. So, so Chip, would the next meeting be when we would do the site visit?
And. Because we'll have to talk about that. I'll involve everybody in the discussion, but if we're going to be short members. Uh, it might be the meeting after next, get ready. So I will get in touch with everybody before the end of next week, everybody will know, or in the middle of next week.
Okay.
Okay, so do you know, so the meet next meeting is the 23rd.
Right.
I'm available. I don't know, Jack and John can weigh in, but.
Brandon, probably.
I think I'm available.
Yeah, I should be.
Okay, that'll be good.
You should have a forum.
All right, tentatively, we'll schedule for that, and I'll confirm that with you all.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Nice one.
We'll be back.
Okay, Arden. My second quarter.
So the next item of business is the Metatomash project.
Metatomash, you're up.
If you could give us a, an introduction to this project. Would help us orient us to what you're planning.
Say something, Jack.
Well, I was hoping that the applicant could present the project to the board.
They're about to do that.
Okay.
All right, you're up.
Good evening, members of the board, I'm Jimmy Howie, and mainly a development consultant. Uh, we're here tonight representing Lovejoy Ventures and their application for subdivision review. Uh, the project sits located on map 111, lot 32, just to note, it was a title of the application, but on lot 32. Um, generally located at the, it's Lane Road, North Wayne Road. The intent of the project is to create a 10-lot subdivision for single-family residential use. Uh, access will be off of, uh, North Wayne Road, which used to be a town road until it was abandoned in the eighties. Uh, but since the graded significance of that section of the road will need to be reconstructed. Uh, subdivision will also have a new road constructed as well. Uh, shown on the plan, we have it listed as, or shown as a bird lane. But we've come to realize that there's an existing bird lane that the town will have to come up with a different name for that. Uh, hammerheads are posted at the end of each road for a big turnaround. Existing conditions, sites undeveloped, wooded, uh, natural resources were delineated by mainland. Um, and the site ownership is, locations of the likely streams. Electrical power, vehicles coming off of, uh, North Wayne Road and Lane Road running, um, and I heard that speaking point. Um, down the right-of-way of North Wayne Road, just search the new lots. Uh, water and sewer, each lot will have their own private well. Um, and septic system, mainland went up to determine the feasibility or confirm the feasibility of each lot and having private septic system. Uh, lastly, stormwater, uh, sits located within the water, Lovejoy Pond. Subsequently, we had to run our water calculations, lots two through nine have had a rain garden on-site to treat stormwater from those lots. Um, the post-development export, um, is less than the budget with the inclusion of those, um, rain gardens of the water standard met. And the stormwater standard, uh, for flooding, that's the post-development standard event as well. Uh, so the peak, peak, uh, flow for post-development is lower than pre-development as the, uh, sites configured. Uh, just one other thing I want to point out. Uh, some metal materials wrong with the application packet we submitted, and there's a table of contents, pages are a little sticky, but it's a table of contents right on the cover page. And that's all I have, and I'm hoping to answer any questions.
Um, so did the, did the code enforcement officer talk to you about this issue of the cluster development?
He did. Yes, and I, into that, and I figured that would be something to discuss this evening, and the board would like this.
So we haven't done a sub, a major subdivision in quite a while, and. The usual process is to have a sketch plan review session first, orient us, then have a preliminary application submitted, and then a final application submitted. You've sort of combined the first two steps in a way, but, um. The, I was, I wanted to refer planning board members to page 90 of the land use ordinance. It's Article Eight, Section 21, and it requires in a 10-lot, 10 or more lots. Subdivision, that it has to be presented as a cluster development, and there's a whole section on the cluster development, the application process. The size of the lots, and all that, and so, and it's mandatory, unless we determine that it's. We can't achieve the purposes of the cluster development provisions in the L U O. So I don't know if any members of the planning board have looked at this, and I've never had this come up before the, the planning board, so I'm.
Jack, can you give us the page number again? I'm just trying to look.
Page 90.
90, okay.
21, Section 21.
Yes. So I didn't want us to go too far without discussing this, because it would, it could change what the applicant's presenting to us. So it says at the sketch plan stage, the applicant shall submit a map showing the significant natural. Oh, that's a long section. I guess in B, it says if it's 10 or more, must be designed and, and constructed as a cluster subdivision. Unless the planning board determines that a cluster development would not achieve the general purposes in paragraph A. And then in C.
Lots, 10, 10 lots.
It says, in addition, two sketch plans shall be submitted with one showing the lot layout as a conventional subdivision, and the second showing the proposed layout as a cluster development. And then it goes on to show, to state what it has to show. So I don't, I don't know how we can proceed very far without having that admitted to us.
So do you need a revised plan as, of designing this cluster? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you've looked at this section of our ordinance, but it spells out what the purpose of the cluster is, and the lot sizes, and. Other requirements such as two suitable sites for septic.
Just, uh, I guess one quick thought, and I'd have to confirm with, with the client, because it's not my project. Um, if we combined two of the lots to have a nine-lot subdivision, would we be able to proceed with basically everything as it is designed currently? Just combining a lot, two lots?
I think so. Because it's, if it's less than 10 lots, it may be designed and constructed as a cluster subdivision. So it's may, whereas if it's 10 or more, it's shall.
Okay, um, because actually I discussed with the, with the owner that, um, we were playing with the idea of combining two, um, to have a nine-lot subdivision. So it sounds like that's the way we'll want to go, and if, uh, who can run with that and keep everything else, um, in the design as it is.
Okay.
I, I have a question. In the third paragraph under project description. Uh, it said that Lot 10 was previously divided and sold within the past five years, and has access off Lane Road. As such, lots one through nine are now, uh, are now proposed. So is it still a 10-lot, uh, proposed subdivision, or a nine-lot proposed?
So it's nine additional lots. The whole parcel was owned by the same person. Um, that lot, Lot 10, uh, was sold, I believe it was last year, in 2023.
No.
Thirty-first. Um, and because that was within five years, it included as part of this subdivision, if that makes sense, so it had.
Good.
So we could, um. I don't know if planning board members have questions of the applicant. I don't know if you've had a chance to review the application. I could lead up a few questions. I, one little issue is the owner is, the owner is listed as Lovejoy Ventures. But the authorization is signed by John Lawrence and not in his capacity as Lovejoy Ventures. So I think, I think we need something in the file that shows that John Lawrence and the other person are the principals in the Lovejoy Ventures LLC. And they're authorizing you to represent them.
We can get that documentation for you.
And then I had a question. Is, is this subject to DEP site review?
It is subject to NURBA, Natural Resources Protection Act, uh, per, uh, per my role for street acrossing. And a, uh, AB stormwater permit by reasonable, are the other two applicable permits.
Um, another question I had was, was the inventory done of any burnout pools on this property?
Uh, our wetlands were, yeah, sand valuator and barns. I just, um, go out to the, the natural resources and none were located, burnout pools, I mean.
Does it say that in your application somewhere?
I'd have to review the, um, the natural resources report, which actually, I'm not sure if it's actually in this application. I suppose that's something I'd have to verify, but not on my intention.
Okay. Um, I didn't look through all your submissions, but did you, were you familiar with the subdivision part of our ordinance when you made all them? Or just the site review criteria?
Um, I, I did review the subdivision criteria.
Okay.
Can you, can you just explain, sorry, Jack had another question.
Go on.
Can you just explain again, the, it sounds like you've resolved this road issue with the town manager. Can you just explain that one more step, so I understand?
Um, by letters, for the emails.
Yeah.
By letters. So, yes, so we want to confirm that, um, the owner of this project has right title interest to, it can develop the road, because it used to be a town road. And I believe it's still a town right-of-way, and if I mispeak, um, you know, re-correct me. Um, but that was just verifying that they can develop what used to be, or still is, um, a right, a town right-of-way for a private road, if that makes sense. And I think that's what that email confirms, is that they can, can redevelop North Wayne Road for, for their use.
So on the stand, on the, in that same email chain, it talks about the general standard, which is trying to go to the standards and designate their prints on the map.
Yes.
On the site line. Um, are you suggesting, so are you suggesting just the town, is the town in any way responsible for a portion of the road that doesn't exist at the moment? Until we, are you asking the town to take on the, the town road responsibility?
Certainly not for construction, so that would be on the applicant. As far as maintenance goes, there would be a road association. I think some of the details there are still to be hashed out because other folks use that, that. Little turnout off of Wayne Road or Lane Road, but that would be a road association set up, so the town had to be responsible for that.
Can, can you tell me, I, I live in that area and the road to Camp Manitoba, the road that goes into Camp Manitoba. Is the road that you're proposing above that? Or is it the same road?
It kind of, it splits off, so Manitoba, Manitoba Camp Road comes on the lane road. And then immediately turns left down through that development and so we would be continuing straight off of that little spur.
So do you share this with, with Camp Manitoba? Part of the road?
Now, that section would need to be shared, so I made some details for maintenance of that section would need to be hashed out with that as well.
And there's already one property over this building right now.
On, on that spur.
Right, yeah.
So there, there are some details to figure out for how, how that's going to get handled.
Have you met with the people from Camp Manitoba, they, do they have any issues with this project that you're aware of?
Me personally, I have not been in contact with anyone there, I believe the owner has, but I have not been to.
But you're gonna have to share the beginning of the road with them, right?
Correct.
And what if they don't agree to share the road?
I suppose that, that part of the project is a little bit outside my skill of what I'm doing. As I'm, I'm a site civil engineer, so I designed this stormwater stuff, uh, the line of areas, a lot of the. The, I don't know, like the legal side of who's responsible for what, it's more on the owner's board. And I can come up with whatever information you need.
Why are the lots such different sizes? I'm curious.
It's kind of a function of shooting for ten lots, now it's gonna be nine lots. And also just meeting the minimum lot standards in some cases. Area wasn't so much of a concern, but just making sure that we had, I believe it was two hundred feet of road frontage on that new road section.
Jack?
Yes?
Jack, one of the Zoom participants wanted to say something.
Thanks, John. Mark Benke, one sixty-eight, Manitoba Camp Road. I am not only a member of the subdivision there, but also a board member. So participating here and probably could clarify a couple of questions on the, the first four hundred feet of Manitoba Camp Road. Just to put everything in perspective, moving west to east and downslope to upslope, you have Lovejoy Pond. Then you have Manitoba Association or the subdivision, then you have North Wayne Road Abandoned Corridor, runs north-south. And then Lovejoy Ventures Properties on the east side of that corridor, so they're not part of our subdivision. And from what I gather, the right of way being abandoned, it still has public use access. So the first four hundred feet that Camp Manitoba has been maintaining for the past forty-four years. Technically can be accessed by the public, and that's one of our concerns is, is we have not been approached. Yet about a road association to help share the burden of maintenance cost of that first four hundred foot section. Or should any damage be done during construction, what's gonna happen there? So that, that was one of our, one of our concerns and I, I don't know if, when I'm allowed, I got two more concerns I just would like to. Touch on, but I'll, I'll wait till it's either a public comment or if you want me to keep going, I'll keep. Okay, the, so, so that road first four hundred feet is kind of one of our concerns there, you know, we have no problem. With John or anybody else beyond where ours turns left down to Lovejoy Pond. You know, using that to get to their property because there are several other lots back there, Kent's Hills back there, different properties back there, so. You know, which is that first four hundred feet, we need to discuss with, with Lovejoy Ventures there to work something out. Stormwater is another concern, I'm glad to hear that the designers have implemented rain gardens. On the site themselves, my one concern is with this new road that's gonna be developed. In the abandoned corridor that needs to meet private road requirements, we're now going to be ditching and channelizing. Water and increasing impervious runoff and I didn't know, I haven't had the opportunity to look at any plans or see any plans. But is there gonna be something that will address the runoff from the road? That's in the North Wayne Abandoned Corridor. And then, and then lastly, there are three wood lots that are owned by Mr. Lawrence. That is part of the Manitoba Association that's on the west side of the North Wayne Road Corridor. And those are subject to our deeds and covenants, so I just wanted to make the planning commission aware of those. So, but those were kind of the association's concerns that we wanted to make sure the planning commission was aware of.
Thanks very much, now, now the, the woodlots aren't a factor here though, right?
Woodlots are on the west side of the North Wayne Corridor, the subdivision's on the east side.
Right.
But those three woodlots that he owns are, are association and our subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Jack, do you understand the procedureally what we're, we're at now, this is an initial review of an application?
Supposed to be the sketch plan review, which is just an initial review. I don't, I don't feel prepared tonight to find the application complete and set a public hearing and notify butters unless other people feel like. They know enough, few that says an initial. Meeting, but the subdivisions is usually a sketch plan review and just orient themselves to the project and ask some questions.
Couple of questions. One is, I understand lot ten has been sold, but I did not see any. Soil test that results for lot ten. Whereas they work for the other nine lots, was there a soil test done?
I don't believe so, here's it was sold later. It was sold somebody else, so we didn't, didn't perform that service for them.
But we still have a requirement, if we're gonna approve that lot as part of the subdivision, we need to make sure that there are suitable soils. So when I looked at the, the plan, it looked like there's a lot of wetland area there, at least.
We do in fact have two successful soils tests, they were done originally in twenty fifteen by Vaughn Smith of West Gardner. And they were redone by Mainland Developments, we have twice done soil tests there. I only have records of one of them, but they have been soils tested.
Okay, so is that information that can be included with the application?
If you desire, yes, we'd be happy to provide that. I can, I can do that in the next.
I mean, if we're gonna prove it, we need to have it.
Yep, no problem.
The other question, I didn't see in the package material any details on. On rain gardens, like a. A, a just typical design. Did I miss it or was that not?
Let me, let me double check, I do have something that's kind of vague, not how, I should say vague, generic or general. Each, each lot will have to have a rule of this, depending on the configuration of the lot, I'm gonna just double check. And we don't have something that's a little bit more helpful and certainly get that. Oh, just a very, very generic lot layout of how an individual house would look. The, the site layout and location where the rain garden would be, there's not a whole lot of detail about what. The rain garden needs to look like, if that kind of makes sense, so that's something that we could add as well.
That typical design, I think, needs to be included, I mean, you're using that as a basis for your stormwater plan.
Any other issues done?
Not, not, not this time.
Do other planning board members have questions?
Is the, is the plan to just. On the, on the north, I think I'm reading this right now, on the north, the North Wayne Road, right, the abandoned road. Be vital, to be revitalized road, reconstruct.
Reconstruct and rename.
Is every name, right, Birch two, Birch Square, is that, is that gonna, is that gonna run? Is the plan just to go up to the end of the lot, the subdivision lot, or literally to that road like there are fingers?
North Wayne Road, for the rebuild segment, I'll run a little bit further. Actually, now that we're combining lot one and four, two and three, these are most likely the lot, this might be a little bit shorter. Right, so it's extended there to provide access to those two lots. Correct, but if these are combined, there'll still probably be a little bit of an extension path for, for a hammerhead, so if I can turn around and stuff like that.
Okay.
I love that answer to your question.
Yeah, I just was, I was just trying to understand because the, the abandoned properties and. It was an abandoned road and you're reconstructing it, it's still there right away, I didn't know how far you were gonna take that, since it's already in the line of thing.
Just, just for quiet access, not that you're gonna spend a burden of money on something that doesn't need to be.
I noticed that you didn't get a response yet from the fire chief, would you be able to get that soon?
I can even contact the fire chief, yeah, the letter was submitted, but I haven't received any responses.
Doesn't Kent Hill own that lot of land way in the northern, northern, northern side? Do you talk to Kent's school yet?
I have not.
Or, or something?
They haven't notified the butters yet.
I'd imagine they have quite a bit of loan in, so, fair.
Take it.
And also Charlie died, it's laying there a bunch that hand too.
Do other members have questions?
Yeah, they do, all the large lots are.
So, it seems like, you know, I sort of stepped into this late and I don't feel like. Ready to find the application complete and there, there was a few things that we've just talked about. Like the authorization from the LLC. I think there was an issue about where. I, I didn't remember whether you said that, you said that the burnout pool inventory was done, but I wasn't sure where it shows up in the packet. That you submitted, then there's the issue of the rain guard design. The lot ten soil test results, the reconfiguration of the sketch plan to be nine lots rather than ten. And also, I think, you know, the road, I think we need something from. The Manitoba Association or whatever it is, saying that they're willing to do this with you, so we don't. Do all this work and find out that there's not gonna be an agreement about the road. We don't need specifics, just that there's willingness to share the road. With something showing that you have some right title and interest to use that road.
We can, all those things together in words, we meet here next.
Okay. So do members feel okay about that, just. At the next meeting, determine completeness, notify butters and all that at the next meeting. While we await some further information, oh, and also. I think we need something from the fire chief saying that the road design and the hammerhead are adequate.
Yes, I can, I can try to grab that as well.
Utility access, not a problem.
I don't think it would be, like physically getting it in there, we'd be overhead electric and we have enough right of way space to run that line. That would be the only utility running down the road is electric and telephone.
Do you have a plan here for how you propose the road association will be done and passed off to the association once you're done?
We have a draft that, sort of boilerplate, for lack of better terms, or association document. Doesn't have all of the details on it because that stuff still needs to be figured out, but, and that would be, I think it's section seven of the application package. Anyway, that's very generic Tennessee where we, we have to enter in the project specific information, but.
So I, I guess we would make a motion to continue this to the next meeting to determine complete, to determine completeness.
Not sure we have bandwidth in the next meeting, maybe the first meeting in May. Which would give you plenty of time to get together what you need to get together, there'd be plenty of time.
Do you need a motion to just continue this, Jack?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we continue this or we do not make a determination of complete, completeness at this time.
There a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All those in favor? There's your.
Aye.
John, okay, and Jack, yes?
Aye.
Okay, John's yes, Jack's yes. So we'll hopefully do it as soon as we can, we'll probably want to do a site visit too. After we determine completeness. Okay.
So you may, you may also consider, I mean, you already did look through the ordinance and through all the different components of it, but. Before the next completeness is done, I didn't see like a meditation plan, I saw sort of a general layout there, like.
Yeah, I can, I can open space, kind of plan, you know, kind of like the building envelopes, that kind of stuff. Even if it's just custom. Yeah, I think the building envelope, sure, but they're not, there's, there's just kind of small, sorry.
Okay, thanks very much.
Well, thank you for your time today.
So in terms of other items, there's minutes, but we're not gonna review them and I think there's nothing else on the agenda. Chip dispatched the mobile home law.
I did call Maine M M A, spoke to them this morning. And they're aware of this, they're drafting a suggestion for towns on where to go. But I did ask some questions and it's basically this will allow. Mobile homes, manufactured homes that are newer than, this seventy-six, they said. They will be allowed in all zones according to this new law. The earliest that it will be enacted would be July sixteenth, which would be ninety days after the close of the session. And the session is probably gonna be extended because they got something out of left field with funding, but you can anticipate this will be. Be around July, mid-July to early August that it will be put in, yeah, enacted.
Okay, keep us posted what you hear from M M A.
I will do.
Thanks. I think that's it for what I had on the agenda. Any issues?
I had a couple suggestions about the minutes, if this is the time to do them.
I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look, these ones Angelica sent out yesterday.
There's two sets, one set was sent out, that was probably a couple of weeks ago, and then one set was sent out yesterday.
I haven't looked at any of them, but you could give your suggestions to Angelica and we could take one.
I don't know what set that was. I saw it before you said today.
Uh, I can kind of, I extended these, the ones I have, when I came by the office on, uh. Friday, Friday, to pick up, uh. Something else. The, uh. Well, I don't know, should we go through? I mean, we don't have to. We can wait for everyone to be in the same set of minutes, whatever.
Yeah, is anyone else prepared to discuss the minutes? I forgot to look at them. Why don't we wait till the next meeting and do them all? I mean, you could send your suggestions to Angelica.
You know, correcting some things or whatever, it might be a funny, well, let me just run through a couple of things.
Is that, is that March 12th or 19th?
March 12th.
Okay, all right, I'm ready.
Oh, I see. No, March 12th was I. Yeah. We're talking now about that, uh, 769 Main Street application. Uh, so next paragraph, representatives, um, of the applicant did not attend the meeting here. Then the next sentence, I'd be, I prefer to say board members agreed that the application was incomplete and lacked some information.
Okay.
Rather than making an assertion.
Sure, yeah.
And then, uh. To the next paragraph down, second line. The idea that the seller can transfer the prior site review. Um, standard conditions of approval, uh, to the purchaser. I would take that word standard. Whatever the conditions of approval are, at least it was gonna be trans, they'd be transferred, I think. It actually, it might have just been the standard conditions, but it would just be the conditions, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then finally, just, Tom and I may, down there, we both, second to last line, that paragraph. Peter added that, so that if the applicant is planning to use a D V A. That name must be registered with the state. So those are my thoughts.
Peter, there's two people sitting behind you, I see. Are they here for this meeting? Sorry, I didn't see you before.
Hi, are you, they're right here?
Yeah.
They're here for the pulling entertainment, but we, we, uh, we can.
I air around, it's a party afterwards. Where men and women. Oh, great. So we had a, woke up particular interest in.
There will be, uh, as the CEO was kind of reminding me, uh, earlier. We're just doing, this is, we were in initial review stage for that.
Right.
There will eventually be a public hearing, uh, and which, well, we'll receive comments, which will all anyone that we should debate.
Well, just, just in the few minutes that we're in here, I'm gonna walk a lot. Uh, John has not approached us about road investigation. So that's gonna have to be a huge element that's gotta be overcome. He can do anything. He has to make the effort and see us talk to the board members who are still up there. So. That's the main event that's. I live right, right behind those limited lots. My concern is obviously the runoff. I need to know how that's gonna be addressed. Because I watch the spring rains, spring melt off. It is kind of fun to watch. Looks like a road trap coming down off a hill there.
Okay. It's hard for me to hear. So is there, are there any other questions that people have?
Can you give us the next meeting?
We have, next meeting will feature. It'll be, start off like tonight, John Cushing, Cushing will be coming in to, uh, have his application judged as complete. You know, he also got the CID currently, which was finally awarded this week, I think, to the, um. Registered Ds, so he'll be coming in to do, give a short presentation, he'll look to get his, uh, initial okay to move forward. Um, after that, then we have a return, hopefully of the owners of the new medical marijuana clinic. And it's been, you know, he has most of the stuff in, still a little bit for more, so hopefully that will be complete. And then I think we'll probably, hearing from y'all today, have the follow-up public hearing. Or of the, uh, start of the caring for the, uh, solar project.
Okay.
Having Manitoba on top of that would be just too late.
Yeah, so you mentioned five o'clock as a possible site visits.
The death rate, everybody's okay. You guys aren't gonna be here, you don't.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, so assuming you can get at least Brandon.
Yeah.
And Jack and John and I. Paul, are you back?
Not walking.
I don't think so. No, not for a site visit. Maybe.
I'll bring my TV over.
Okay.
Could you, could you ask, nor would you, should have asked them, actually, when they're here, but perhaps ask them if they would be comfortable. Um, planning board members go buy the property. Uh, if we can't join the side, is it just?
I'll ask them tomorrow, just so that I have, uh, I, I can try to buy something at times, at least I have that pushy expectation as well. Angelica, did you write your name later?
Yeah. Yeah, just so we can all see.
I really don't know what to drive.
Anything else? No, we can adjourn.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack. Good job.
You're hired.